I think, geez. It's all heated. I'm not sure how much it's full, but it's a hip part of something.
Does he know what his sister's taking?
There you go.
I always say that, like, as if we need one or two, we're going to always want one.
Yes, there are. There's gotta be a great woman creep. There's gotta be a good story behind it. Oh, more stuff for me to add than my file. I already have a big file.
Good evening. Good evening, a lot to welcome you to the December School Board meeting. Probably one of the better meetings we have all year, always has some good entertainment. And without further ado, we will get started. Board, you've had the agenda for the meeting. Any, Dr. Rollins, any changes, corrections, or additions?
The agenda would stand as presented, Mr. President.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board, you've also had the minutes from the previous meeting. Any comments, questions, or changes need to be made to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is also the time now that we would welcome any comments, questions, or concerns from our parents or anybody here in the audience. Just come to the podium, state your name, and address us with your comments, questions, or concerns. Just understand, we cannot take any action on it tonight, but we'd love to hear from you. We have none.
As president, it's my privilege to invite our student representative from Harbor High School, Ms. Riley Mulligan. Riley, we'll come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please stand, Riley will lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Riley. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're very glad to have each of you here. Riley, it's such a pleasure for me to introduce you this evening. Board, if you'll turn to page twelve on your agenda, and then I'll share this information with our guests this evening. As I said, this is Riley Mulligan. She's a senior at Harbor High School. Her parents are Mary Mulligan and David Mulligan. Mary, I know, is here, and her brother's here as well this evening. We're very glad to have the family with us. Riley is the student council president at Harbor. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She's a member of the Silver Stars. She is involved in debate. She is involved in DECA, the District of Education Clubs of America. She plays tennis. She's taken four AP courses and is taking three this year, which is a phenomenal undertaking, Riley. We'll be interested in hearing about that. She has a 4.0 GPA. She plans to attend the University of Oklahoma, majoring in international business. She will then pursue law school at Southern Methodist University. What a great career you've already had, and obviously you've got great plans for the future. I know our board would like to talk with you, Riley.
Yes, so I'd just like to thank the board for inviting me and Dr. Creek for giving me the opportunity to be here today. And I am just really excited to talk to you about what I've done at Harbor and through Springdale Schools and what it has set me up for to do in my future as well. So, thank you.
What schools did you go to before?
So, I went to elementary school at TG Smith, and then I went to Houstern and Central and then Harbor.
So, you're involved in a lot of different things, I see. What would you, what would you say to somebody that's thinking about coming to Springdale Schools? What would be something that, why they should come?
I think one of the biggest things is just the amount of things that Springdale Schools offers. And I've had the privilege to work with amazing teachers who have been able to cooperate with my different activities, and I haven't had much problems with figuring out when I was gonna do what, because my teachers always took care of that for me, and my coaches would always step up and figure things out and made it to where it was possible for me to fit in everything I possibly could. This past year, I had a tennis match and pigskin, our pigskin preview on the same night, and my coaches were able to work that out, and I was able to both play in my tennis match and then go straight to pigskin and perform for Silver Stars that night. So, I think that Springdale Public Schools has put a lot into me in making me able to pursue all the things that I would love to pursue. So, that's one of the big, greatest things that I've, you know, had through Springdale Public Schools.
What, what made you decide the University of Oklahoma?
Both of my parents went to school there. I have a lot of friends there, and I, just growing up, loving the university, I went on a tour there before, the summer before my junior year, and I just felt at home. They have the program that I want to go into as far as international business. My plan is to become a corporate lawyer, and so I talked to a lot of advisors there, and they kind of showed me the path that what it would look like at their university. And so, I just felt like they really, you know, they recruited me really hard, and they showed me the path that I saw for myself.
Good for you.
So, that's why, yes.
Nothing against the University of Oklahoma.
They win football games.
That's true, of course, yes. That is definitely part of it.
Well, I know that you're four years away from law school.
Yes.
If things stay as you have planned right now, so I know things could, could change, but what is the draw to SMU? What's?
Yes, so originally, I'm from Dallas.
Okay.
And so, I've, and always since I've moved here, like, nothing that I didn't love about Arkansas, but I've always just had the desire to go back, and I would love to pursue corporate law in the Dallas area. And so, a lot of research that I've done, a lot of different people that I've talked to have suggested taking the bar and studying law in the state that I plan to pursue law school in. So, that is the reason that I figured that I would pursue law school at SMU, since that's where I planned on pursuing law.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so, that's why.
Well, congratulations on an excellent career.
Thank you.
Education. It's impress, you have an impressive resume.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Riley.
Also, does your parents?
Yes.
Family, would you like to recognize them?
For those of you who attend our board meetings on a regular basis, you know that this event is where we have students on display, don't we, Michelle? All along the way, and tonight is really special. We have two performing groups that I know you will enjoy. I would like to ask Mark Harmony, if you would. Gentlemen, will you please take your positions? I, I met this group about a month or so ago. They are just outstanding young men, very, very talented. They performed for us on a couple of occasions, and I really look forward to having them with us tonight. Guys, just wave if you will. Matthew, where are you? Matthew, we're glad to have you. RC, where are you? Good to see you guys. Reagan, where are you? And Kyra, where are you? It's good to see you guys. Thank you for being here today. Again, their group name is Mark Harmony. Gentlemen?
From, what, what school?
Actually, I met them at Springdale High. Is everybody at Springdale High, guys, or where are y'all? Introduce yourself, tell us what school you're from.
Um, my, um, sorry, my name is Reagan Jackwick, and I, I'm a senior this year. These two are graduated last year, and our, RC is in, goes to Harvard.
Okay. Good. Very good, very good. Thank you, guys.
All right, so the first song I'm gonna sing for you guys is actually an original song we wrote. It's called "It's Christmas Time." It's a pretty basic name, but it's a pretty good song, so we gotta do it. It's Christmas time, and I feel alive, feel alive. This is always hard, you know, gotta find your love. Find your love. I can say the loving you, I can hear the voice saying things. I would rather hold you close and try to understand. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's time to bring your families together. Spring the love, can you bring this moment on the Christmas way? Tell me, can you feel us being together? You know, I said I could feel whatever, and I'm so lucky, I'm not, I'm so glad you want to hold me. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. Open the door, and you look upon the door. And then I look upon the door. Oh, I just wanna say the word. He is born on the side, he was born right outside. He was born of the virgin Mary on Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. The King is born the son of God, and the angels sing from the sky above. It's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. It's Christmas, it's Christmas, it's Christmas time. That was the song. All right, thank you, guys, for singing. The final song is actually a cover, but it's very good enough. And it's kind of like these penultimate versions, but we kind of four-man squad, so we kind of push it. So, hope you guys enjoy. And Mary, did you know that your baby is coming? Oh, oh, oh. Mary, did you know that your baby is coming? Say the same to your love. And you know that your baby boy is coming to make you do. He's child of you, he's a lion, who soon will live with you. Mary, did you know that your baby boy will make you the bride? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will come the storm he is there? Did you know that your baby boy have one for angels' child? When you kiss your little baby, you kiss the face of God. Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? The blood will see, the death will heal, the death will save you again. Death will save you. The dawn will speak the praises of the land. Mary, did you know that your baby boy is the creation? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will make you the nation? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect land? This bleeding down you're holding is a great love. Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Oh, Mary, did you, Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Oh. Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know?
Mark Harmony, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you for having us.
Hey, do you guys have any parents here?
Beautiful job, gentlemen. Jake, will you come forward and introduce our group from Jones Elementary School? Mr. Jake Beers, our assistant principal agenda.
All right, so we have our third grade, one of our third grade classes, and they are about to do their third grade musical next Thursday night, and so we brought Miss Gunther's class. And this is our first-year music teacher, Mr. Serta, and he's gonna introduce the number they're gonna perform this evening, and we'll let them get started.
Just like Mr. Beers was saying, this is one of our third grade classes, and we are doing just kind of like a representation of the theme musical number that we have for Christmas by the well-known poem "The Night Before Christmas." This is, this song is titled "The Blitzen Boogie."
Great job, Sam. How's that for an introduction to the hall of fame, Joe? Good job.
Thank you.
Jason, are you coming here, boy? Mr. Burkett, are you ready to come down? Chad, you ready to come down?
Yes, sir.
We've got a great announcement tonight, really good information to be shared for our FFA program at Springdale High School, Mr. Chad Burkett.
Sir.
One of the lead ag teachers, the student.
Man, you got a tough one to follow there.
I was so excited listening to those young men, young ladies saying, man, they did a great job. It's always fun to see kids do great things. We recently got back from National FFA Convention. Appreciate Dr. Rollins getting us in early. We have a NABHOLTS partnership, they're interviewing some students for a really cool opportunity, I'll explain in a moment. But Springdale FFA was recognized at the National FFA Convention October 29th of this year. We were awarded a National Superior Chapter Model of Excellence Award, being one of the few elite programs in the United States as far as FFA's concerned. They judge that based on our program of activities, what our students do, what our students achieve. And to be honest with you, we were, there were only two finalists from Arkansas that went, us and Harbor, and we got two-star Model of Excellence National Superior Chapter award, so very proud of our program, Springdale High School students. We took nine delegates, these are three, we have some kids at the high school. We've had a really busy fall, a lot of community involvement, they want to visit with you a little bit. One of the coolest things this past week, if you follow social media, obviously, we got a huge donation from NABHOLTS. We've got a really cool opportunity, we're going back to school in just a moment. They actually put together a youth corps where they're hiring students to explore career options in construction, construction management, various different levels, concrete masonry, even management, and they're gonna hire nine of our students to go to work. They're gonna pay them $12 an hour without OSHA-10, but all of our students have OSHA-10, so $1,250 with options post-high school, so 16 to 18-year-olds. It's really a first of its kind, because most construction companies can't get around the liability issue, but we have to thank the folks at NABHOLTS for making that work. So, really cool opportunity, parent night tonight at Springdale High School. We've done a lot of cool projects last week. Mr. Thomas here is gonna explain, we've got a really cool surprise, a donation, and he's gonna talk to you a little bit about community service work we've done with NABHOLTS.
Just before I do that, I'd like to say how much Burkett has done to help us get this NABHOLTS opportunity. He's been at school all summer long, getting this, getting this set up for us, and it's a great opportunity. We were judged with the rest of this area on that donation, and they decided to get, give that donation to us, because they felt that we could best benefit from that with the opportunity they're giving us, but anyway. So, we, we worked with NABHOLTS, we built a handicap-accessible sidewalk with our, with our mechanics classes. NABHOLTS helped us with that. What was the, what was the concrete people that helped us?
Standard Materials Group donated the concrete. We worked with NABHOLTS as far as finishing, and it's kind of cool, 'cause the kids got to do a curb cut in Pleasant Street there. And so, it was kind of funny, I had some kids, we were, we had shut down some lanes of traffic, so we had all of our safety gear. The funniest part was one of the city inspectors come by, and one of the students, you know, flagging traffic, said, "Go on," and he said, "I need to talk to who's in charge," and he says, "It's none of your business, go on." He said, "I think it is my business," and I said, "I'm sorry," they're just, you know, so it was kind of funny. He said, "No," he said, "That made my day." He said, "It probably isn't that my business." I'm so sorry, sir. He said, "No," he said, "That made my day." So, we had a good time, and there was some humor had on in the city as well, so.
Yeah, we've had a lot of great opportunities right now in our mechanics class. We just finished that curb, and we're working on some sheds right now. We're building a shed for the track and basketball team, isn't it? So, we're building a shed for them, and then we've also got a chicken coop and another smaller shed that we're building in there, so we're busy at that. We've just had a lot of opportun, great opportunities that Burkett's helped us get this year, and I think he deserves a round of applause for everything that he's done.
The deciding factor when people come to Springdale is really the work ethic. You see the heart of the children with arts, you see it in sports, and they see it in the work ethic, and you know, the gentleman I've been working with closely, Marty Schmidt, he's been in construction for 45 years. He comes from Houston, he's been here for 20 years, and he said that seeing the work ethic and the heart of the students at Springdale High School is what has pushed him to want to do these programs. He's actually coming tomorrow, he's the general superintendent. He's the general superintendent for the entire company, and he's coming to show them how to lay out rafters. And so, you know, for him to take time, you know, they have major projects, just like any other construction company. This guy's a very busy, important man. He's coming to spend two hours showing kids how to lay out rafters. And so it's really cool to get, when you get community involvement, community partnerships. And NABHOLZ is one of many companies. I mean, we work in the West Arse, Sheet Metal, uh, you know, L&amp;L Metal Fab, Marz Electric, these folks, and, uh, you know, so anytime you see business leaders, Harps has been great, donate poultry for poultry judging, uh, we just can't thank you enough. Thank you for the opportunity. I don't do anything special, we just have some really special people at Springdale.
We're very proud of all of you.
Thanks, sir.
Really. Good to see that program come forward this way.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's a really cool honor. National Superior Chapter. Pass it around, yes. But, any question?
Chad, you want to introduce the young ladies for sure?
Yes, we have, uh, Kalen Spearman here. Uh, she's a sophomore at Springdale High School. Sidney Burkett, sophomore, and Matthew Thomas is a junior. Uh, three, three of many representatives we have, so they attended National FFA Convention. If you have any questions, it's in Indianapolis. We got snowed on, got caught the snowstorm, and so it was a really cool experience.
It was fun. Do you have any questions?
So what are both of your aspirations, or all three of your aspirations outside of high school?
So... So I like to, like, build on things, and I like swine, and he got me, him and Kristen Pennington got me really into that. So I really thank FFA so much.
You can't let them do all the talking, though.
I'm glad that I got the opportunity to be in FFA and get to go on the trips with them, and then also get into showing. Uh, this past year, I showed some rabbits at the Washington County Fair, and I was glad that I got the opportunity to do that.
This year started beautifully. Our, our experience at the county fair is one I'll remember. Matthew, I don't know that I've ever had a better tour guide. He took me around, showed me every project, and could talk to me about every project. It was just beautiful, and I really enjoyed it. So it was great to be with you all up there.
Thanks, sir.
For sure.
Appreciate you all.
You've just built on that throughout the year, haven't you?
Yes, sir. We've been blessed this year. We've given lots of love to them.
That's, that's great. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good job.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're very pleased to have with us the Executive Director of our Springdale Education Foundation. This is Mr. Chris Stecklein. Our foundation is just doing phenomenal work to support our students and our teachers, and our Board President, Mr. Kevin Owenby, has a special...
Well, in the spirit of giving, which is not kind of weird, but we kind of grew this idea a month or so ago. And, uh, last year, we gave to a particular group in the, as a board, too, in the Springdale school system. You know, it's really kind of hard to put your finger on who exactly that you can maybe assist financially. So this year, we thought the Springdale Education Foundation might be an opportunity for us to contribute to, which would touch, uh, many number of kids and students in our district. So our team here as a board would like to present you a check for $1,100. And the beauty of this, um, after talking to Chris, is that since we exceeded $1,000, um, there's an endowment that would match that, that's literally $2,200. It's really the generosity of the entire board, um, I'm just giving them the check. So it's really gratitude to these guys right here, so.
That's very timely. Um, as you know, Board, we're, um, in our December grant cycle. Uh, the foundation funds grants twice a year in May and December. And, um, we're, we're just off the heels of our cornerstone event. It was our ninth cornerstone event. Uh, inducted a great class of, of honorees. And our goal, if you remember, Board, last time I was here, I said, "Our goal, we need to, we need to raise enough money that will allow us to fund grants that will put us over the million-dollar mark." And I'm very pleased to announce with this check, um, that will help fund these grants. We have 17 grant requests that our committee's reviewing right now. Uh, I anticipate what we'll fund will put us over that million-dollar mark. So we have, um, in our first nine years, we, we have paid out $500,000 in student scholarships, and this check will help us put out $500,000, or $500,000 in classroom grants. And so, Board, without your support, we don't get it done. So I thank you very, very much.
My pleasure.
For all that you do to support our work.
Thank you, Chris.
Um, one last, uh, one last piece. You know, we're, we, we look constantly for ways that we can augment the great work that happens throughout our district. And I would like, you know, just take the opportunity now to thank everybody that has helped do what we do. Um, you know, we started this year off with a bang, and we did a duck race. And, you know, when our committee said, "I think we can, uh, you know, I think, I think we can raise $5,000 at a duck race," and I was like, "You're crazy." Uh, we put 400 rubber ducks in the creek, Turnbow Park, and, uh, we raised $10,000 that night. We don't do that without all your help. Every one of these schools stepped up and they, you know, started the school year off busy, and then we threw something else in there to make them busier. But we raised $10,000 that goes into our grant bucket. Um, so our cornerstone event, you know, ninth event, um, at the end of the night, the matching funds, this included, we raised over $50,000 at that event. Uh, we have a tremendous partner in Trudy Education Foundation. They were a big part of that. They stepped up with a $20,000 gift that night. Uh, but we raised another 30 throughout. It's, and it's just from the grassroots efforts of everyone in our community. Um, you know, it, it, it's, it's, it's very humbling for me to be able to stand and do the work that we do, knowing that we've got the support of our community, and it's, it's, um, it, it is a blessing to do what I do, and I thank all of you for your support. So thank you very, very much, and thank you for this. It will go to great use.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
Alright. Have a good evening.
Mr. Ikenberger, will you come down, gentlemen? A few days ago, we had the opportunity to be at Springdale High School. A great event, celebrating a lot of different things, but at the heart of it all was to acknowledge this wonderful gentleman's selection as the State Assistant Principal of the Year. Don, thank you for your great work. It's, uh, it just gets better and better, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Without question. I got a, a request, uh, Mr. Schaefer brought me a request today from the local newspaper, and they're, they're gonna do a special acknowledgement of, of this recognition, and we're very honored by that. But here's one of the questions that, that the reporter asked. How has Don Ikenberger been an asset to the Springdale School District? And you think back over 30 years of service. And Don started in the district as a coach, was a very successful coach in the district, touched the lives of literally hundreds, perhaps even thousands, of Springdale kids. He was a great inspiration for each of them, and certainly for those of us who got to stand alongside of him and watch, watch him work with our young people. What you may not know, of all the teachers in our district, and we have 1,800-plus, Don is one of the most recognized instructional leaders in our district. And he's done that over time. He's worked in literacy, he's worked in social studies, he's worked in health. He's helped write curriculum for the state of Arkansas, which has obviously helped kids beyond our district. But at the heart of it all, Don was there as a, as a friend, as a supporter, as really someone who encouraged us all to get better all along the way. And Don, I want you to know that our instructional team is very aware of that. And it's a privilege for me to be able to share that in this form with our community this evening. Your, your contribution, your career contribution is the kind of work that has made this school district great over time. I like to say that the qualities that I'm trying to share with you about this wonderful gentleman are the very assets that's helped build the school system over time, and we're so very, very thankful for that. Thank you. Thank you so much, Jeff. I'd be embarrassing just a little further. I don't mean to embarrass you. I, I want you to know what you mean to all of us.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, I really think that the work that you've done has been an example. It's been a model for all of us, and it is the kind of thing that's helped this great school system be what it is today. We're very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Your comments to the board.
Thank you very much. I don't know if I deserve all that or not, but I appreciate it very much from all of you. Let me tell you a quick story. Yes, sir.
You'll take it, right?
Yes, sir, I will. Uh, the, one quick story, uh, when I got interviewed for the job that I have now six years ago, uh, going upstairs to, to the interview room, like many of the people sitting in here have, and it started off, Dr. Rollins looked over at me and said, "Okay, we're gonna start off with a few softball questions." How many in the room have heard that before? A lot. After I got high and tight fastball for about an hour, uh, you know, I was really privileged to get a job. And I want to tell you right now that it's one of the most humbling things in my life is the opportunity that our leadership team, Dr. Rollins, Cleveland, Dr. Smith, everybody involved in our school board, have given me to come and work with the students in Springdale. In a position as an administrator, uh, I can't tell you how humbled I am that you placed that trust in me. Number one, and number two, I'm so privileged each day to go and work with the kids at Springdale High School and the service community. Uh, we've been a part of this community now for 29 years, and it's, it's been 29 great years. It's been like one year, it, it hasn't been, it's been like, yeah, each year is, is something great and special, and I'm excited to come to work, and once again, I'm humbled and honored that you gave me the opportunity to do that, and I hope that you let me do that for a little bit longer, anyway. That's all I have, because when I first started, the second thing that happened to me, I was gonna tell this story, too. Uh, you know, I'm not gonna pull the bus, I'm not gonna be up for very long, so. Uh, but, uh, after we got done with the interview, Dr. Rollins agreed to hire me. Uh, Dr. Cleveland and Dr. Smith pulled me over, and they said, "Okay, you got three rules, Ikenberger. Number one, keep your mouth shut. Number two, don't talk unless you have to. And number three, if you do have to talk, call Dr. Smith first." So, uh, I tried to follow those things, and that's helped me out a lot, so. But once again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, and this award, it means a lot today, but it's really demonstrated of the staff and the people I work with, from Mr. Jones and all the other great people that I work with each and every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Paul, you want to come down and stand with Michael? Mike, where are you? Mike, uh, we are so very proud of you. Another very special recognition. Come on, come on to the, you have, you have to talk to this group about all that's going on in the program. Michael's just been selected by the Region Five Choral Directors as their Choral Director of the Year, and what a great job he has done over time. We saw a great example of that just this past weekend. My goodness, what a performance. Uh, those kids just set the stage for our entire holiday season. We are so proud of you, and congratulations. Paul, you may want to add some comments. Uh, Mike, talk to us about the program out there and the things that you're doing to engage your kids at the level we've just seen.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I've been fortunate enough to come back to Springdale. Springdale's my hometown, and so I'm a product of the Springdale Schools. I was under the baton of Mr. Pat Ellison and under the direction of Mr. Randy Irwin in, in music, and they helped fuel that passion that I have now, that I'm, that I've worked so hard to give back to our students. Um, uh, along with Mr. Pianalto, him and I, uh, see about close to 275 students daily. Uh, we have five choirs that we work with, and, uh, our event that we had last weekend, Candlelight Night, we had, uh, two evenings of it, and we sold over 300 tickets. It was a sold-out house, and we had 175 students, uh, working through that, uh, for the performance. We combined, uh, them on numerous numbers. Uh, we had surround sound going, choirs in the front, choirs in the back, and it was just a really inclusive environment where we got to, uh, include a lot of our students. And, um, once again, I, I am just humbled to be a part of this program and to be giving back to these kids and to fuel that, because not only are we teaching music, but we're teaching kids, and we're teaching life and fostering those kinds of things, and just showing them that through music, they can attain wonderful things.
I just want to add, I mean, I'm so proud of Mr. Brown. I've worked with him, you know, as a dad and then as a principal, and just, you know, his classiness and the way that he leads is just, to me, amazing. And, uh, I appreciate our school board and Dr. Rollins about how you all invest in the arts. Again, when you see the productions that our kids put on, it's because of, you know, the fine arts in this community is a priority, and it just, it allows Mr. Pianalto and Mr. Brown to do their thing, and, and it's just so beautiful. So I'm extremely proud of him. Thank you.
Yes, and I would like to piggyback on that and just say thank you as well, because without that kind of support, uh, for the arts, you know, not everyone has that. And to have that support from you, from our administration, just shows us that, uh, you do have faith in what we're doing and that it is important for our students.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It's also a pleasure for me to introduce Mr. Gina Smith, our Director of Food Service for the entire district. Gina's just, just does a great job along with her entire, uh, food service staff, and a great recognition has come to the district in the food service area. Share that with us, Gina.
Yes, and so in the beginning of October, we received, uh, recognition, um, for the district and as a Five to Thrive school district. And, and Five to Thrive is a campaign supported by the Arkansas Hunger Relief Alliance, and the No Kid Hungry, and the Arkansas Children's Hospital. Uh, their mission is to encourage schools to offer a variety of nutritional and physical, um, programs to improve students' health and academics. And basically to, um, to give recognition to schools that are going above and beyond. And, um, at Springdale, I have found that we do that every day. And so this award is not something that, you know, I'm accepting as our department, and I feel like this is an award for the whole district. Um, but I'm happy to, to be here tonight to share that with you. And we, um, are one of the 11 districts in Arkansas that received this award, and the great thing about it is that we didn't have to apply for it. Um, we were recognized, and individuals know what's going on here at Springdale. And we were able to visit this summer with Ms. Patty Barker. She's the, um, Director of the Hunger Relief Alliance, and, and she visited Parson Hills. They had a, a summer program there at Parson Hills, and, um, she visited, I know, uh, with Ms. Cooper and with some of our staff, and so we were able to share about some of the programs that we do here at Springdale. And so she walked away very impressed, and I think she went back and shared that, and so that's, I think that's how we made the list here. Um, but the reason that we received this award was because of our breakfast in the classroom that we offer. Uh, up until this year, we offered it at 12 of our elementary schools, and this year, we were able to add it at John Tyson Elementary, um, which has drastically improved, um, our participation at breakfast. We have more than doubled our participation. So we have, um, anywhere between 70 and 80% of our students actually eating breakfast every morning. So whereas before, we were at 50%, well, less than 50%. So, um, then we also, um, provide our summer meals, which qualified us for that, and our after-school meals, our supper meals. This summer, we provided over 21,000 meals to students in Springdale, and then in our supper program, um, last year, we provided, um, over 60,000 meals. So we're very proud of that program. Um, also, our food corps team that we work with, uh, at eight of our schools, uh, they provide cooking classes and nutritional classes to students, and so that was another, um, qualification for this award. Um, we have school-based pantries. We have more school-based pantries than I can count. I, I wish we had a great list, but they're popping up every day at our schools. And, um, so we're very proud to have those. Um, that was the fourth thing that qualified us for this. And then also... And then, also, our teachers do something called Go Noodle in their classrooms. And so, that's providing physical activity a break throughout their day with the students, and it's a lot of fun. So, really, I was just a part of this award, but very excited that we received this here at Springdale. Along with the, just the recognition, we received $750 that we plan to spend in a, to go along with our fresh fruit and vegetable program and to provide some educational activities along with that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Board, our focus this, focus session this evening is on the term relevance. Relevance in learning. And Ms. Eads will introduce the topic, and then we've got some special guests who will help with all that. Ladina, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Dr. Rollins and guests. Springdale Schools has been a leader in educational progress. We push the boundaries for learning and therefore expect that our students will do the same. We move students from teach-them-all to application-ready. We work to help students know what they can do with their learning. And it's our pleasure to present to you tonight. Thank you for allowing us to share how your support has helped us be relevant. Cards are available for you to ask questions, and we will collect them at the end to answer at a later time. The world is in a constant state of change and forward progression. Unfortunately, our schools are one of the segments of society slower to adapt to the demands of the changing marketplace. As such, too many of today's students are catapulted into an uncertain future, ill-equipped to deal with the challenges they will face. This is a quote from Dave Burgess, who is the publisher of Don Wetrick's book. "We have already seen presentations about being collaborative, looking farther than the person beside you, being task-oriented, moving from what-if to a to-do list, and becoming daring individuals who are brave enough to risk failure." Tonight, we will share how students and their work are relevant. Students will explain how they and their teachers are bringing meaning to learning, answering the question, "When am I ever gonna use this in real life?" We begin with Parson Hills Elementary and their principal, Heather Cooper.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins and Board, for having us here tonight. We are so excited to let a few of our students shine, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Ms. Ballard, one of our amazing third-grade teachers, and she's going to tell you just a little bit about how they are bringing real-world relevance to their third-grade classrooms.
So, as we were learning about how the government is formed and the power that voting has in our communities, we were wanting, we were trying to find a way to make it more relevant to our students, because that's such a not-now, right-now concept for them. And so, we decided to form our own governments in each of our classrooms and have students elect their own officials. So, we had a president, vice president, and treasurer, and each of these roles would have important leadership responsibilities in our classroom and would affect students in everyday ways. And so, we formed, we went through the whole election process. These are some of our officials from each of our classrooms. This is Ms. Alma.
Hi, my name is Face Braden, and I am vice president. And today, we will be teaching you how to vote in third grade. First, I told my teacher I wanted to run for vice president. Then, we had to write a speech about why we wanted, about why I wanted to be vice president. And my speech was about making sure things go right and make sure that nobody's being bullied. Then, we, then, when we were done writing our speech, I had to give it in front of my whole class. And then, we voted on our computers privately on a Google form. And then, then, a few days later, it was time to vote. And when Ms. Arroyos, and when Ms. Arroyos said this person was so close, and when she said my name, I freaked out. Because I was so excited. I really thought I wasn't gonna be elected. And as vice president, I got to meet a veteran. And my job was to show her around and help her learn about our school family.
Hello, my name is Matt Caleb, and I am a class president. So, during Smash Ball, the kids were fighting, so me and the vice presidents and presidents met. And we decided that if it happens again, they would have to write a letter about how to play Smash Ball the right way. The treasurers are not here, but their job is to collect money from the class for parties and field trips. And thank you for having me today, and don't forget my name is Matt Caleb.
Hi, my name is Alma Fuentes, and I'm going to be saying a speech. Officers that are elected, set an example for other students. For example, if I see someone sad or having a hard time, I check on them. I also try to always follow class commitments. If we don't, we can't help our class, which is our business job. Thank you for having me.
I think that we would see a lot of change if we could just send them to Washington, right? So, when I knew our word was relevance and third-grade teachers began talking to me, and I started seeing this in classroom walkthroughs, I thought, what a great way to bring relevance to the classroom than just having them solve some of these problems that arise every day and putting them in charge of things like collecting money and planning. And so, just very proud of this crew and their teammates back at school and their teachers. This is Ms. Harnett at the end here, and Ms. Arroyos. And I think we are introducing Monitor Elementary, Ms. Andy Akef.
I also brought a third-grade team. We have our instructional facilitator, Sarah Kennedy, and our third-grade teacher, Jamie Ramsey. And we have Matthew, and Andy, and Dulce. And they are going to share with you how we're making math relevant at Monitor. So, we were thinking about the word relevant for elementary school math. We thought of two main components. The first one being math in real world, like how we are mathematicians every day. And then, the second one is showing leadership skills by teaching peers, other students, how to solve problems. So, we see relevance every day in all of our classrooms at Monitor, but we decided to highlight one of our third-grade classes tonight. So, Jamie Ramsey and I were working on a project with her kids about how to be relevant in third-grade math.
Good evening. So, as a third-grade teacher, I always try to find ways to make learning relevant for my kids. And sometimes with math, it can get a little complicated. And as I was researching, when I discovered using real-world images in our, in our life to bring math out. The reason I love doing this for my kids is, first of all, I can take one picture, and so much math can come out of one picture. As I was listening to The Staircase of Learning, it also reminded me, as a district, we're focusing on meeting every student wherever they are and leading them to be application-ready. And so, as I look at this picture right here, it makes me think of my students, how my students who are struggling can attack a math problem with a real-world image, and it provides support. And then, students who are ready for a challenge, it also meets them. So, it meets all of my students. I've brought three mathematicians from my classroom family today, and we have been working on creating number talks. On the screen, you'll see one that I've done with my students. So, it's my handwriting. What we try to do is we try to pull out the math knowledge first. And that has really deepened my students' understanding of addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, because they have to be able to prove themselves before they choose a strategy. And then, we focus on our strategy work. After doing this in my class, my students, y'all up doing number talks? Yeah. They realized that this would be really good for some of the younger students in our school as well, so they've created their own projects, and they wanna show those to you today.
My name is Matthew. We decided to create our own math number images and see if we could find math in that picture. Ms. Ramsey has shown us so many pictures of different things, and we saw a lot of math, like addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. I chose to use a picture of donuts. This is what a number image talk looks like in our third-grade classroom. First, we found the math concept we thought the picture was showing in this one. In this one, we saw the halves of donuts, so we knew we were learning about fractions. Then, we used equations to show our thinking.
Hello, my name is Andy. We took a few days to walk around our school and find things that mattered. We saw math in real life. We took pictures and then created a number talk on that picture. I chose to use a picture of cinnamon rolls. This is what we created for first grade. As we planned, we thought, we thought about what math knowledge and the strategies first grade students might use.
Hi, my name is Dulce. I chose to use a picture of our class chrome box. This is another one we thought would be great for first graders, because they could use addition to count the green, the black, and the total number of chrome books.
Good job. Good job.
Because of the work, math has become relevant for my students, because they're not just mathematicians during my math block every day. They are becoming mathematicians in the real world, all day, every day. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Shane Benson, the East facilitator at Jones Elementary.
Thanks for having us. I thought it was gonna be hard to follow the musical acts, which it is, but maybe even a little harder after seeing all that food. I'm getting kinda hungry, so, but thank you for that. It's just the clicker. All right. Today, I brought Dani Martinez with me today as well. We're gonna share a little bit about the relevance going on at Jones Elementary. Thanks for having us today, and I appreciate all that you do. So, I also was struck with the question, when am I ever going to use this in real life? It was actually the very first thing that jumped out to me when I was reading Don Wetrick's book. I think it stuck out to me because I feel like all of us ask that question, at least, hopefully, you do. Because I feel like everyone should know what they're learning is applicable or not. We need this so that we can be application-ready. Students and teachers must see the relevance in their work. I think it's an important question for all of us to consider. At Jones and in Springdale, this helps students make connections with what they're learning and their future. One specific way we do this is by giving students choice. Student choice gives relevance voice. As you can see in some of these pictures, we have some different images from my classroom and some first-grade classrooms. We've got a 3D scan going on. We have first graders doing some coding there, and I'm gonna introduce the next slide through that. So, the first thing I'd like to talk about is my student Garrett. Garrett is working on a project in East right now. This is an ongoing project, so if you've been paying attention to my classroom, you'll know that this is going on, and he's still sticking with it. He is missing his pointer finger, so I don't think it really gets much more relevant than that. In fact, we're such a family in our classroom that everyone this year in our third grade, or fourth grade class, I'm sorry, wanted to help him with it, and I kinda had to divvy it out. But some of the things that are going on with that is 3D modeling, scanning, slicing, meshing, and 3D printing, just to name a few. In the first-grade classroom, which is the very left picture, we have kids who are learning basic coding through simple logic with robots to binary bracelets. All ages are learning coding, which is why I also went to a week-long PD this summer, and I actually earned my computer science endorsement. Lastly, our second through fifth graders have been coding with microbits. And I'm actually gonna let Daniel talk a little bit about this. Danny is actually a coding master, so without further ado, I'm gonna hand him this.
Hi, my name is Danny Martinez. I am a fifth-grade student at Jones Elementary School. One of my favorite things about school is learning how to code. When I cool, a lot of things happen. Things begin to move, and things pop up on my computer screen. Learning to code is very important. When I grow up, I want to be a game and robot designer. Both of these jobs require their employees to know how to code. I appreciate the opportunity to show with you how relevant coding is to me. I also wanted to show you an example of my microbit.
Should I tell my dad?
So, so this is a rock, paper, scissors, coded microbit. So, it, so it moves on shake.
And I am now gonna introduce Ms. Ladina Eads. And again, my name is Shane Benson. Got that line for me.
Did you build that? Did he build that?
Yeah. Well, so, the microbit is a little microcontroller, but he actually wrote the code on it. So, you could actually play rock, paper, scissors with him if you wanted to. If you really want to, you can.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Kiana Titus, and I'm taking intro to engineering and design. Think about this for a moment. What makes you want to buy a certain car or cellphone? The commercials or appearance of the product. Whatever the product, the reason, designs plays a vital role in the creation and marketing of a product.
Hello, my name is Sean Shrimpton, and I am also in intro into engineering and design. We were asked to take a plain white coffee cup and enhance or change the design so that everyone would want to buy our product. We had to consider the following. Define the problem, generate concepts, develop a solution, construct slash test a prototype, evaluate the solution, and present the solution. We learned that the process was not as easy as it seemed, and working with a group requires patience.
We also learned that we needed to listen to all idea, all ideas and not let only one person direct the product, project. We had to be confident in our designs to share them, and compromise does not always mean giving in, but finding the best solution.
Hi, I'm Mossoa Rais, and I am currently taking computer science. At the beginning of the semester, assignment seemed simple and took little effort, and I was unsure how I could ever use this class in life. As the year has progressed and the work has become more difficult, I found a connection between my current geometry class and algebra concepts from last year. Learning how to do loops has helped me become a better programmer, provided me with a tool to sharpen my problem-solving skills since it may take five to 10 tries to solve a problem.
Hi, I'm Haley Person, and I'm a freshman at George Junior High School. Our teachers are making learning relevant by applying Covey's Seven Habits to Student Life, developing listening and thinking skills, and using logic from science and math, as well as current events in government to develop arguments for, from multiple points of view and debate. Compiling a collection of short stories written in Spanish to share with our feeder elementary schools. Creating websites to present information that can be shared on the internet. And dissecting pigs to learn about ourselves in agriculture. If you live in the South, being able to converse about the weather is a skill most of us learn from birth. Before our new arrivals, this skill is being developed as they learn about weather systems and patterns in their English language development class.
Hi, I'm Ashaya Potter, and Haley and I have recently did a project in English that brought relevance from the past era by connecting real-world events to a situation in To Kill a Mockingbird. We worked in groups to analyze and create a presentation on mob mentality and how it can be both positive and negative. Since we usually only think about the negative, we focus on the positive. For example, mob mentality was present at the Boston Tea Party. This event in 1773 helped propel the colonists to establish a new country. We feel that standing up for what we believe in can be a form of mob mentality, but for the positive. We use this idea to motivate- We use this idea to motivate people into action and make changes for a better world.
Hello, my name is Sarah Romero, and I am a freshman at George Junior High School. Bring meaning to school, what kind of question is that? Isn't that what we do every day? Math calculations, read about old dead guys, and come up with yet another way to build a volcano? So when the teachers asked us what we wanted to learn about to bring relevance to learning, we were stuck. No one has asked us that before. We at George call it Genius Point. We meet four days a week, two times a month, to research and plan projects that we are interested in doing. Our teachers helped us get started with a questionnaire, showing us examples, giving us suggestions, and having us pitch our ideas to our classmates for feedback.
Good evening. I am Tolly Gera, and I am also a freshman at George Junior High School. For Genius Point, some of us are working by ourselves, some are working with a partner, others on a whole class project. I am working with our principal. It was a little scary at first, but when I started learning about a reporting tool called ESSA, it opened my eyes to a whole new vision of George Junior High School. I learned about individual data categories and that those add up to six major categories, ultimately determining how our school is being graded. I want to share this with students and parents to help them better understand that we can change our school's grade if we understand the world better.
Can you share that with me, too?
Here are just a few of the projects students are doing. Learning a new language, writing music to original lyrics, how to change attitudes and expectations about attending college, selling senior T-shirts and donating the profits to the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation, creating a robotic face from recycled parts, building a habitat for a pet turtle, how to build a wind turbine to power a boat, and how to produce a movie. They are as diverse as the students who are doing them, and the best part is that we are in the driver's seat of our learning. We are still working on a way to have an exhibition of all of our ideas, projects, and research, just 720-plus of them. But the best part of all of this is that we are doing it. We are looking beyond ourselves for answers, making our own to-do list, finding learning in our failures and meaning to our learning. We can do it. Thank you for being there to help us.
So just one final thing on Genius Point. We've been doing this since Labor Day, and we put kids in groups. And this morning, this young lady came in to me and said, "Ms. Eats, I just want to know if you think this is okay." So she's never taken an art class, she's never drawn, and her genius point was, how do I paint with spray paint? So Friday, after we've been doing this now for almost four months, she went home, and this is what she created. And when she walked in and showed me this, I was like, "Oh, nice poster." And then she explained what she did, and I went, "Oh, no, I'm still taking that tonight." Right, that's what I said. Throw me new, new fundraiser. So, sorry, I digress. I will go down to the... We not only accept the challenge of a changing marketplace like Dave Burgess suggested, we embrace the opportunity for risk-taking and allowing creativity to flourish. Thank you for, again, for your time and attention tonight to all of the relevance that our schools are bringing to Springdale schools and our students, while we showcase this relevance of being application-ready.
Yeah, so a couple of comments. So I know the focus sessions sometimes take you out of your normal daily activities, but when you come to the monthly board meeting, we get an opportunity to see the kids, and I'm not discounting what the administration and the teachers are doing because we do appreciate all of that, but look at the display of the kids and their competence and their poise and their clarity and how they communicate in front of a group of people they don't even know. So that's what is so exciting about what we're doing in Springdale is that we get to see that just a little bit every month. So we appreciate the kids again, so let's give them another hand. And then you parents who sacrificed time to come here tonight to allow them to present to us, so we want to thank you for being here. So if you'll recognize the parents. Just a great group of kids, a lot to be proud of, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Board, we want to share with you the great events of Caroling on the Creek, which we had on display this past Friday and will have again this Friday. Trent, I'm going to ask you to be our spokesman, but if you will, I'd like for our MCs to come forward and join you as well. Marcia and Shannon were MCs for the event, and Trent obviously was the director and producer, helped put it all together. So tell us the story, Trent.
Well, last Friday, we had two phenomenal hosts, and that was Marcia Smith and Shannon Tischer, and they were amazing. Damon and Kelly are hosting this Friday, but I don't know where they are.
They're practicing.
They might, they might get bumped for these two again.
Kelly's prepping on now, isn't she?
That's exactly right. This Friday, we'll have NAP, Westwood, Sonora, Shaw, Walker, Lee, Jones, Tyson, Harp, Helen Tyson, George Junior, Southwest, and then three high schools, Springdale High, Don Tyson, and Harbor. And they can talk a little bit about the experience as well. I just wanted to invite everyone out there. It's beautiful. We had a little over 2,000 people show up, about 20 different booths, 15 choirs. We have the largest living Christmas tree in the state of Arkansas, and so it is really a fun, beautiful night celebrating business and the connection to the school system. And one thing that I'm partial to, of course, is we integrate media into all of it. So we have social media teams, we have photography teams, we livestream the event, and it also helps because then we can always do, you can always watch it on demand. So you can watch these two performances from Friday on the Springdale Schools YouTube channel, and you can watch Damon and Kelly live and watch them on demand as well. Do you guys want to mention the event?
I don't have much to say other than I have a new appreciation for, you guys need to fill time for 10 minutes, and we were like, "What?" But, no, yeah. I will have to say, his team does an amazing job. They kept us focused and on task, and the students were second to none. They're amazing. We're very, very fortunate. I've heard a lot of compliments. I know when we were at the Harbor Choir event, people were coming up to us left and right saying that that event, and they gave, used Trent's name extensively, but said that the event was just unbelievable. So we're very proud of the work that he does and also our choirs throughout the district.
I would just say really quick, a really good friend of mine said that she went to this event, and she felt like she was in a Hallmark movie. And if you ever watch Hallmark movies, I had not thought of that, but it was very much like a Hallmark movie in downtown Springdale. And I know that our growth in our city is exploding over time, and we're getting very big, but it felt very small. And it was awesome to see all of our community come together, support our school district and local business, and have some holiday spirit, and just spend some real quality time together as a community, and it was an honor to participate. So thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow night. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Great job.
Oh, Friday night. If you want to come tomorrow night, Friday night. Thank you.
Mr. President, the last item in the first section of the agenda is just to acknowledge that the board will be very engaged over the next three days at the State School Board Association meeting. And we can make this adjustment kind of on the fly. The afternoon session starts at 1:00. I think if we leave by 8, we'll be fine. Don't y'all? Let's just, we'll just meet here and leave at 8:00 in the morning. Does that sound good for those of you who can travel with us? No, we don't want, we don't want to at all, do we? Randy will play a major role in the conference as well. Ms. Creek is a part of the planned presentation tomorrow. Thank you both for doing that. Randy, you're going to be in a really important conversation about current events. Well, I think it'd be great. I really do. You'll do a great job with that.
I think they're afraid to let me participate, so I'll be coming in hot on Thursday.
Hey, I want to give a shout-out to Marcia. You're doing great work. She's feeding me some good answers.
I know she is. I know she is.
And, you know, this is the kind of lady, I tell her, I should get a couple bullet points on each one. She's got like a, you know, page on each thing, so stop it. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that's great. And Debbie, in her own way, will tell the Springdale story, a little different version, but it's all about learning, isn't it? And all the pieces that come together that we see on display every month. So we look forward to your contribution for sure. Okay, we have events planned through the day, events planned in the evening. Be a great learning opportunity for all of us, and I look forward to being there with you for sure. Any comments or questions, Mr. President, about, about the conference? Thank you, all. Okay. Do you want to stretch, Mr. President, or shall we continue?
Keep rolling.
We good? Okay, the Division of Instruction will continue to recognize really the great work of our students and teachers as we look at academic achievement across the district. Dr. Smith, you want to start?
Harold Janine, he is a president and CEO of ITT. It was an international telephone company. And he took the company from a $765 million company to a $17 billion in sales company. And what's so astonishing, astounding about that, it took place in 1970. But the reason I bring him up is he defined leadership as leadership is not a person or title, it is action and its example. Action and example. So I want to thank Dr. Rollins for his leadership of action and example. At the same time, I want to introduce these two individuals that are my team in instruction, Ms. Childress and Ms. Tischer. There are four items on the curriculum and instruction part. They're going to do it in a blended approach and as a team, so if they'll come forward.
Thank you. Dr. Rollins said it's all about learning, and that is not the first time we have heard that from him. It is all about learning. That's why we're here. Our why is our students, and all means all. We want learning for all. And tonight, we are here to celebrate some great achievements as a result of student learning. So I'm going to start, do we, is it, oh, there you go, okay. I'm going to start by reading the beginning part of a cover letter from the Office of Education Policy that we received in November, and it said, "Dear Dr. Rollins, the Office of Education Policy at the University of Arkansas has recognized your district as one where students demonstrate high growth on the ACT Aspire. We think growth is the best indicator of the positive impact that your school is having on students." And then enclosed in that letter were some awards that we're going to share with you tonight. And that's what learning is. Learning is growth. So principals, when I recognize you for your award or awards, you may come up and receive them. So Young Elementary received two awards for highest overall achievement, a statewide award, and a Northwest Region Award. Walker Elementary, and go ahead and stay up here if you don't mind. Yeah. Walker Elementary also received two state awards, one for overall growth at the state and one for overall growth math. Hunt Elementary received two overall growth awards, one for statewide elementary and the other for statewide math. And we next have Helen Tyson Middle School, and they actually received three. Helen, two in this category. We'll go through the other one in just a second. So this one is best growth scores in math and best growth scores overall. There we go. There is also a category called the beat the odds category. And the beat the odds category looks at schools that, for a variety of reasons, have lots of risk factors for student learning. And the beat the odds schools are schools that beat the odds, that those risk factors don't play a role in student learning. Students are high-growth and high-achieving despite the challenges. And so this year, George Elementary won two awards for beating the odds, high overall growth and high math growth Northwest Region. Monitor Elementary has an award for high math growth. Harp Elementary has an award for high math growth. John Tyson Elementary has an award for high math growth. Lee Elementary has an award for high ELA growth, English Language Arts growth. And then Helen Tyson has beating the odds overall. Stephanie, there's your other one, and beating the odds in math. Double beating the odds. Sonora Middle School, Ms. Bowerman, I believe, is here, for beating the odds in math. And I will have to accept for Southwest Junior High, they have a choir concert, and then Ms. Lindley sent a message that she was ill suddenly and could not make it. Southwest Junior High, beating the odds in math. And then Springdale High School, Mr. Jones, beating the odds in mathematics. And when you do a great job with growth, sometimes it's enough to earn you reward money, and so also want to recognize the schools that have earned reward money. Young Elementary earned a total of $117,200 for top 5% performance and top 5% growth. Hunt Elementary's reward money, $113,400 for top 5% performance, top 5% growth. Walker Elementary, a total of $78,158 for top 6% to 10% performance, top 5% growth. George Elementary, $56,400, top 5% growth. Tyson Elementary, $54,000, top 5% growth. Harp Elementary, $47,900, top 5% growth. You may wonder, they were all top 5%, why didn't they get the same amount? Because it is awarded to you on a per pupil, on the number of students that took the test basis. Monitor Elementary, $33,650, top 6% to 10% growth. Childress NAP Elementary, come on up, Ms. Covington, $33,600, top 6% to 10% growth. Lee Elementary, $23,700, top 6% to 10% growth. And Helen Tyson Middle School, $71,700, top 5% growth. And so overall, we are the number two district in the state for the total amount of reward money. So for 2019, as a district, we received 41 state awards for achievement and growth. In overall, ACT Aspire Growth, 13 awards. Overall, ACT Aspire Beat the Odds, 16 awards. And for OEP Reward Money, 12 awards. So a great year for learning in Springdale. Congratulations. And I think Mr. Schaefer wants all of you to head out by the bell for a great picture.
Congratulations, all of y'all.
Shannon, would you ask Allison to come back, ask her not to leave? I want her to, yeah, I want her to share some more.
Thank you, kiddos.
Jared, let's let Allison come back, but she'll slip away if I can get her back in here.
Can you go get her?
They're getting her, I think. If they can find her out there. Well, you go ahead and we'll look her in there in just a sec. Is she coming back a little bit?
She's coming right back. They're taking a bunch of pictures.
Go ahead, Jared, and then we'll follow with Allison.
We'll interrupt you when she's back. We'll interrupt. Okay. I'll just, just got the latest update from Dale Scarborough on SOI Phase Two, and this is it. So, hot off the presses, I think he sent it to me at about 4:00. So, haven't had time to send it to you by email, and so, sorry, Dr. Rollins. Typically, I try to get those to you early, but I just received it. So, it's a good report. In personnel, we're starting to receive a few resignations, so you'll see some of that. Dr. Rollins will see that, too. So, I interviewed a young lady today for Helen Tyson. We had a teacher who has to move away. Her husband got transferred. Those things are happening, so we're likely to have 10 or 15 or so personnel do that over time. Something that Dr. Rollins has been really interested in, we are buying new science tables for Archer. They'll be in tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So, he's been after us for quite a while. Where are those science tables? So, I wanted to let you know, those are coming in. Jeremy's going to be plumbing those, Dr. Rollins.
That's great.
So, after Christmas, we ought to be completely finished with that facility. Two small little projects that we're doing that might, you might see or hear about, we're adding some gravel parking lots. One's over at Tyson Elementary School. I know that the principal over there really would like to have that. And so, Alan Athie started on that this morning, and then we'll finish up on the second one over at Helen Tyson Middle School. So, just adding some additional gravel. We have a lot of staff. Buses are parked there. We want to make sure that things are safe for everyone involved. SOI Phase Two is, yes?
We're at Tyson Elementary. You're running through the gravel lot.
Do you remember where the old pre-K playground was just to the east of the gym?
Yeah.
Right there. So, we're relocating a water line and a gas line to create a little parking area, and we're going to add some water over time to the gym, maybe some bathrooms over time. So, we're working on that as we speak.
We crammed a lot of stuff in that little corner.
Yes. And when the road was widened, it made our space a little smaller. So, anyway, we think it'll help. We think it'll help some overcrowding. We think it'll help with the buses getting through and cars getting through and teachers having an opportunity to park in a safe place.
Can you say, "Nice." The middle school's giving them?
In the very back, by the cafeteria, we have coaches who also drive buses, and they go to other schools. Well, we've been parking the buses out by what we call the old hen wash, okay? And it's a kind of a muddy mess and a track back there. So, we're creating a space for the buses to park behind the school, out of sight, out of the way, and in a safe location closer to where the-
They're sitting out there on that road by the middle building.
Yes. So, we're going to try to move them around out of the way. It just makes it a little safer for everybody. So, that's our effort. So, we thank you. Thank Ms. Anderson for helping us with that. Let's move to Springdale High. The tennis courts are complete. The concession stand's complete. We're wrapping up on finishing the fences right now around the facility. Topsoil will be in at the end of the week, and we'll have a little sod to go in over the top, and that project will be done. It is absolutely outstanding. Yes, sir?
Did we fix the big, massive cracks that were in the discing courts?
We did. Dr. Rollins had us do that while we were there. We resurfaced those and painted them, so they all matched. They all look like they're new. So, it was a little extra effort, but I'm glad that he had us do that. One neat thing, there's a big black super S on the front of that little concession stand. It's backlit.
I saw that.
You know, it's the little touches that I think are really interesting, that I really enjoy. Dennis DeBusschere's sign kind of set the new standard for us on how that works. So, we're pleased with all of that. Okay. For the baseball fields and softball fields themselves, wind screens, caps, things like that are coming in over Christmas. So, we should have everything buttoned in and ready to go and looking like a real facility in January. We're going to throw a pitch out there. The mounds are being built. As we speak, you know, there's a special clay for those, so it takes a little bit. We've had to bring those in and going to have those built. I think you'll be really proud. And I don't know what Dr. Rollins wants to do as far as opening that, or those fields, but I think he's probably going to plan something pretty nice. And he's been planning, been talking about that here lately. Two things he and I have both worked on even this week, we've been budgeting, having budget meetings with Baldwin Shell on the locker rooms and the wrestling dance facility at Harbor and Springdale High. Now, those are going to be a challenge. So, just know that upfront. We're working on it. His pencil's really sharp, and his mind is, too. And so, nobody's going to get over on him as far as price. So, we're looking at having those plans to you and potential budget late spring. So, don't expect any construction going on while we're playing basketball, baseball and softball. We'd like to have a good season with that orange construction fences and things like that. And then as soon as the last pitch is pitched at a baseball or softball event, we'll be prepared to start construction. So, they won't have to go too long without-
So, you don't believe the little bump in the road dulled the sharpness of his mind, do you?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Nor do I.
Okay. Let me get where I can see again after that comment. One neat little aspect that we're building over at Springdale High, you know, we have the property across the drainage ditch. Y'all know Kevin Conkin, right? Well, he and Jeremy have gotten together, and they've built a walk bridge. They've taken a concrete tile, cut it in half, and put it over the top of the drainage ditch, and we're pouring concrete and putting up nice lights that leads to both of the fields. It's a surprise to Dr. Rollins, but he smiled about it.
I wonder what I read about it earlier. I thought, what in the world is that?
It's going to be nice. It's going to be a nice little walk bridge because we have that, out by Huntsville, that property, something's going to be there one day.
Yeah.
And so, it was really smart to think, okay, what can we do now to prepare for that and not have any extraneous costs? And since we have those guys who are so talented that that kind of work, they said, we can do that, and we can do it cheaper than anybody else. And so, we did it, and it's going to be neat. I think it's well-deserved, and will be beautiful. Parson Hill School-Based Health Center, second week of February is the completion date. It's going really well. Again, another thing to celebrate. We've kind of been toying with the idea because we're really moving along with SOI Elementary School, what that could look like. There's potential of expanding the health facility there, maybe into a school-based health center. I don't know. You and Dr. Rollins and all will have to think about that, but it's an option. I know when Dr. Rollins says, hey, well, what's innovative about that, having a new school of SOIs, that's pretty neat.
That's good.
And have opportunities for students, teachers, and community itself. That's a pretty innovation, or a pretty innovative thought. So, we're looking at that. No promises, but we're going to try to do what we can to get that done. Other than those comments, I know it was quick. Do you have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Well, it's a lot of fun to do the work I get to do, and I'm thankful that I get to do it here. So, thank you all, and I appreciate you.
Beautiful job.
Thank you.
Allison, will you come join us for just a minute? Would I know you're aware that we had a very special guest in the district just a few days ago? It was such a beautiful experience. The First Lady did a great job. Allison, you and the team, and certainly our students did a great job in terms of hosting that entire event. Share that with the board.
Oh, wow. I know. You don't have as much time as I need to share this.
You're talking about being put on the spot, isn't you?
I wish y'all had been there, though. She wanted to stay longer. That is the best compliment for our district, for Harp Elementary School. It was such an honor to get to be a part of that. But I have to tell you what I learned about the First Lady of Arkansas. I don't know if anybody here knows her personally. I certainly don't. I just know of her. I know who she is. She is a gifted, masterful reader of stories. So, I can only think that she must also be a gifted storyteller, because if you're familiar with Dr. Seuss at all, she read Horton, Here's a Who to 80 kindergarteners, and let me tell you, they were spellbound, absolutely mesmerized. I've never heard a reading of Horton, Here's the Who like that. That will go down as an all-time favorite forever. She just had them in the palm of her hands. And when she, and I have to tell you, and you might not know this, Dr. Rollins, so I'm just going to go ahead and tell on us. But when all this came about, and we were reaching out, and there was contact back and forth about what were the expectations, we asked about a book. Did she want us to pick one out, or did she want to do that? And they said Horton, Here's a Who. Let me tell you, during the headlights look from my library media specialist, from all of our kindergarten teachers, and it was like, do you know how long that book is? And she's going to read this to all of our kindergarten students. And I said, well, we're just taking, we're following her lead. And so, I did have the librarian get another selection along with Horton, Here's a Who. And I said, we'll put these out there, and that way she can choose, but we will go with what she does. All of us, every grown-up in the room, I wish y'all had been there, we were as mesmerized as those kindergartners when she started reading that story. And my kindergarten teachers came back later and said, oh, my gosh, we never had anything to even worry about. That was unbelievable. And we all walked away learning about things that we wanted to use in reading a story to kids. And every voice, the kid, I said, did you hear it? Did you hear it? She was a model of exactly what we all need to be as readers. The voices, the expression, it was unbelievable. So, anyway, thank you for letting me share. I'm sorry I took so much time, but it was a phenomenal visit. Truly an honor for our district. So, thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you. I wish my agenda item was as engaging as Mrs. Hutchinson's storytelling, but unfortunately, it's just out of district transfers.
You should try.
Yes, maybe I should use voices. I think you'd, I think you'd be disappointed. But in your packet, you do have the list of requests for out-of-district transfers. There are six students requesting to come into Springdale. Two of them are from Fayetteville, two from Rogers, one from Huntsville, and one from Cylone Springs. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve these out-of-district transfers into the district.
I make a motion that we approve the out-of-district transfers to come into the district.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mrs. Creek to accept the transfers as stated in the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Eloquent.
More voices, though.
I was on the edge of my seat.
Here comes the show.
Now, yeah, really exciting stuff. Do you mean Dr. Rollins, Ward? I have three items for your consideration this evening. The first item is the proposed budget of expenditures for the '21-'22 fiscal year. This is a requirement in order to start the election cycle. As you know, our election is in March, and this will need to be on the ballot as well. Basically, I look at recent history and extrapolate forward a few years, and then when that year gets there, I'm astonished at how wide I missed it. But I do my best. I can tell you the bonded debt payment will be that unless something changes between now and then. I can assure you of that. The others are just good estimates on my part. So, anyway, would ask that you approve that.
So, the question that we always ask is preliminary, it's something we do every year, and you have to do it a time period before each election?
That's correct.
This is protocol?
Yes, it's just part of the steps that we need to undertake.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget of expenditures for '21-'22 as presented.
Proposed. Right. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Hutchinson to accept the proposed preliminary budget numbers as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. The next item that I have for you are related party disclosures. These are just redis disclosures that we can only do them for a two-year period of time. And so, we did these two years ago, and it's time to do them again. The first one is Celeste Kreamer. Ms. Kreamer is a teacher at, in one of our schools, but she also does seamstress work, alterations. So, in the event that we use Ms. Kreamer, we would only use her in the event that it was in the best interest of the district to do so. And then the second one is Roller City. Roller City is the only skating rink in Springdale. It is owned by Stephen Lightfoot, who is employed by the district. And so, because of that unusual circumstance, we are also needing to disclose that relationship. So, I would ask that you pass a resolution allowing us to do business with these.
Both?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the two disclosure forms submitted. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the proposed resolutions as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the final item I have for you this evening is the November, excuse me, the November financials. During the month of November, we receive our largest tax settlement of the year because property taxes are due in October. And so, in the month following, we receive a large settlement. You may have noticed, we received almost $22 million in local property taxes in the month of November. So, therefore, our balance does go up in November, and then over the remaining part of the year, we gradually, it will gradually come down. You can see that our revenue report, we're showing right in line with where we were this time last year, very close, as well as on the expenditure report. We're slightly ahead, but really statistically saying it's, we're dead even. We did make an interest payment this month on our bonds of around 3.3 million. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, though. We're in good shape.
I don't have any questions. I would entertain a motion again.
Make a motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the financials as presented for November. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Do we have a representative from our Springdale Education Association in the audience this evening? Mr. President, I believe that concludes our agenda.
So, before we adjourn, I want to tell all of y'all who are still here, Merry Christmas. Enjoy whatever time you get off with your family, friends. We, as a board, truly value what you do for our district and for our kids. And I'm speaking only for myself, but I would think they would concur as well. So, have a Merry Christmas if we don't see you between now and the New Year, and Happy New Year. We appreciate you guys. Thanks. We are adjourned.